So it's seven o'clock, so we'll start the meeting. First, I'd like to welcome Paul to every, I would like to announce that Paul is our new member to everybody that's in attendance, which looks like it's Dave and Jay and Nicole. Thank you for stepping forward. Jay, thank you for the select board to go through the and Christina to go through the exercise of appointing. Now we have a complete board and we can, we can roll, roll on with our projects.
Nice to be back.
Excellent. Public comment, if there's any public comment, you can offer it now or I am a very lax chair and I will allow it when we are doing other things where public comment is interesting. If you want to vent, vent now, have at it.
Christina Pedoni.
All right, Christina, go for it.
Did Paul decide if he's gonna stay and rerun? Still an open question.
This is the first minute of his first meeting. I think we're gonna, we're gonna count our blessings.
If people treat nice, do that, but that's many months away. Are you gonna ask the question every week?
I swear I'm coming, Paul, every week, whenever I see you.
All right.
Um, is there any other public comment? Okay, well. To the people that just joined, it is a public comment period. If they have any public comments you want to put out there, just let me know and we'll let you do it. Okay. Okay, well, I'm gonna say that public comment will stop in its formal sense. But since I'm a softie, I'll, I'll let it go. I'll, I'll, I'll ask for it later in other places. Now, we're gonna try to reorganize, reorganize the board. So we'll do, first we'll do the major, the, the officers, the chair, vice clerk and treasurer. Does anybody wanna nominate themselves? We only have three people here.
Yeah, I will make a motion for Mark to be the chair.
Paul. Frank was the chair, uh, vice chair.
Yeah, Frank to be the vice chair. Paul, you want to be a clerk or? Nothing.
Oh yeah, Vinnie was the clerk, so we don't have a was the clerk.
Paul Anderson to be clerk and who else is there?
Treasurer was Frank.
No, you said Frank is the vice chair.
Right, he's not gonna come to the meeting, so he gets all the offices.
So who is the vice chair now in that case?
It'll be both, Frank will be both vice chair and treasurer unless he, we'll leave it like that.
I can be a treasurer. So Mark vice chair, Frank vice chair, uh, Paul clerk and me as a treasurer.
That's fine. You okay being clerk? At least we have a Nicole, so we have a assistant to do the, the grinding work.
Right, yep, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so Raj made the motion, you'll have one more person to second it. That's you, Paul. Will you second the motion, which is?
Me? Well, I second, yeah, I'll second it.
Yeah, you're the only other person here.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? I, oh, wrote my vote since we're on Zoom. Raj?
Yes.
Mark, yes. Paul?
Yes.
All right, make it so. Okay, and then committees. That's where you have Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw Committee, but Bylaw Committee is just default to me, just because I'm chair now. We won't vote on that one. CMR, PC, CPC, Earth Removal, Economic Development, Open Space, Townwide Planning and Transportation. Transportation. Paul, do you have any that you'd like to jump onto? Or do you have any you'd like to jump on?
I'd like transportation if that's free.
So Mark, I want to be on the CPC.
Okay, so Raj. CPC. Oh, Kevin's here. Kevin, what committees are you on or were last year? Were you transportation? No, you got off.
I was off transportation. I was on CPC and economic development.
Nice. Oh, really? All right, well, we have uh, Mark for Bylaw, uh, I'll nominate myself for Affordable Housing Trust again, because I have work to do there. Oh, crap, I'll nominate myself.
Myself for the committee CPC.
Yeah, I was gonna do like a slate, Earth Removal. I have work to do on Earth Removal, so I'd like to get back on it, but does anybody have a driving desire to be on Earth Removal? Frank said he didn't care. He was on it last year.
Did they meet?
But I would take it. Yeah. It's a pain in the butt when there's anything but the, the standard renewal. So I have meeting minutes and crap like that to finish up, so I was gonna go back on it just so I could finish them up. But if you wanna be on it, I'll, I'll just do it from afar.
No, I don't need to be on it.
Okay, I'll go, I'll nominate myself. I'm just, I'm writing a slate and then I'll nominate a slate. Oh, you can, you wanna, you wanna stay on Economic Development? Or is it, or Paul, you want Economic Development?
I'm okay with staying on everything I'm on.
No, Raj wanted the CPC. It can't happen.
So in that case, you know, Mark, I make a motion for me to be on the CPC. He was, Kevin was there for two years. I'd like to be on the CPC this year. So last year he did the same thing. This year, this is my motion. Let's take a, is that? I'd like to be on the CPC.
Hey, Mark.
Motion only CPC.
I'll second the motion. He can have it.
Okay, uh, second, and then we'll take a roll call vote for the Raj for CPC.
Yes.
Mark, yes. Paul?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Yes, all right, so that was, that was done. Uh, Earth Removal Board, I put Mark, Economic Development will leave Kevin. Open Space, that was a Vinnie. Anybody interested in Open Space?
About it, what, what's, uh, can you kinda give me some, fill it in a little bit?
Um, right now they're finishing up their, oh, I don't, I've never been on it, but right now I know that they're finishing up the Open Space operate, uh, operation document, operation, uh, Open Space. Something like their production document or something like that. Christina says it's finished. But I, I, I don't know if it's come through for, I don't know. Okay, so that, that's finished. So I guess there's not much work being done over there, but that's what they usually do. Then they do other things like, I don't know, keep an eye on, um, like Blueberry Hill, things like that. I think when Blueberry Hill needed some work done, I don't know, they found the people to do the work or something like that. I, I mean, I'm not sure what they do, but it's mostly parks and open space, um, that's not DCR in town.
So we typically do two, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm up to four. Raj is on one.
I go back to transportation only because I've got some history there, but I don't have to.
Oh, Paul was saying he was interested in that.
Who was Paul? Okay, well, we were, we were both on it together, so that's fine. We were, yeah.
How are we getting together? Anyways.
Uh, I was on from, uh, the, uh, as a citizen.
Okay. All right, I was gonna give Paul because he's brand new, so we have to give him what he wants, so he'll stay here for at least a couple of meetings. Oh, so do you wanna try Open Space? I don't know how much, I don't know.
I, I don't know. I, I, maybe, I guess, maybe, I mean, what's Frank's?
Well, anybody else? Oh, we should stick Raj on there. Raj, you wanna be Open Space?
No, 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 no. Nope. I'm all set.
Okay, Kevin, your own.
Raj, you're not very happy tonight. What's going on?
No, 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 I'm fine.
Uh, Townwide Planning is the only one. I think that was another Vinnie, but I don't think they've met in a long time. I'm not sure. I, I think they're trying to spin it up again. Christina, do you have anything on that?
I asked today, I guess they are trying to get it going, but they haven't been able to have a meeting in about seven months.
Oh, okay. Is that because they don't have enough people?
I just think they can't get a time.
Okay. Does anybody wanna be on? Raj or I don't?
Uh, we can give it to Frank. It's not there. You know, he can always say, no, I don't want it. You can always put it.
Raj is very bossy tonight.
The only thing I mean, what?
Raj is very bossy tonight.
The only thing I don't wanna do is I don't know if they have, I know they had, I know they had trouble at some point or they had a concern at some point because it's a big committee, so they need a lot of people to make a quorum and I don't wanna assign somebody who's not gonna go and sort of screw up their forum. Although, what else to do with them, you know? Okay, we'll give him Frank. I mean, and then if it comes back, we can reassign or something like that later. It's unconventional, but I'm all in. Okay, so here's the slate. Affordable Housing Trust, Mark. Bylaw Committee, Mark by default because he's chair. CMR, PC, Mark. Earth Removal Board, Mark. Economic Development, Kevin. Open Space, Kevin. Townwide Planning, for Frank. Transportation, Paul. Do I have a motion to do that?
So.
Okay. Was that Paul, so moved Raj second?
Second.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, roll call, roll call vote. Mark, yes for the slate. Raj?
Yes.
Uh, Kevin?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Oh, wow, resolving success. Well, we're doing well. Going slow, but we'll get there. Nicole? Could you send a message with this list to, I think it has to go to Faye, Heather and Damien, so they can connect up all these people to their committees? And everybody has to get sworn into their new committees, well?
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Do you want the list again, or do you wanna go back?
No, I have it.
Okay. Minutes review. I don't know, we can assign these. I don't know if anybody really does anything except for the com- committee they're on. Board of Health, does anybody wanna review the Board of Health minutes? I mean.
I'll do the ZBA.
Okay, Raj, ZBA. Mark. Raj, can you do the select board too?
You do the select board.
I hate the select board. I mean, I don't hate the select board, Christina. Enjoy. All right, Mark will do the select one. Uh, Conservation Commission, anybody interested?
I'll do, I'll do Conservation.
I'll do Board of Health. I think, I think nobody picked up, right?
No, that's, that's, so the slate would be Kevin, Board of Health, Paul for Conservation Commission for Select Board, Raj for ZBA. Do I have a motion?
Motion, uh, uh, so moved.
Second, in a second? Second from Raj. All right, uh, any more discussion or anything? Call the vote, roll call vote. Mark is a yes. Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
All right, all in favor? Perfect. Check, 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 check. All right, next thing is the signatures. So, all right, so here's another Nicole. Can you print out Leslie's email, just stick it in the mailbox? And when people are in town and can stop in and just sign the card, it'll just be in the mailbox. It's, they just, uh, want your signature so that you can sign for bills. And then the next motion I wanna make.
Mark, we do need to make a, we do need to make a motion to sign. I will make a motion to sign any one of the planning board members for all as a signet.
Is this, is this something that we have to change, uh, we have to vote on this every year?
Every year, yes.
The, the motion to make it one person, we have to mo-.
Anyone, anyone.
Anyone, I think. I think it is an every year thing, though. But yeah, so the motion's there. Do I have a second on that motion to make one person? All right, and then any more discussion? All right, call, uh, roll call vote. Uh, Mark, yes. Paul?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Perfect, all right, that's a good one. All right, another Nicole. Can you just tell Leslie that we did that, so that one person or one signature is okay?
Yeah.
She might need like, I think if you finish the minutes and send her the minutes, that's good enough. Send her a message that says like, on this date, we voted this motion, whichever way you wanna do it. All right, number five. All right. Uh, set the Dunkin' Donuts hearing date. Oh, uh, I think I saw Patrick. Which Patrick is that? Is that Patrick, uh, Healy?
Hi, Mr. Chair, it's Patrick Healy from Thompson.
Excellent, Patrick. Yep, so this is, this is the, the, we didn't make the hearing date because we didn't, we didn't make the um, schedule because we didn't have a Paul, but now that we have a Paul and a, and a full board, we'll do it. Is August thirteenth, uh, okay for you? That's our next regular meeting.
Seems fine with me. Um, I did contact VHB to determine their schedule for the review and, uh, Wayne mentioned to me that he had not received the project yet within order to review it. So I would ask that the board, please refer it to VHB so we can get that review done prior to the meeting.
No, I just wanna get in front of the whole board. So, yes, so whole board, I just, do you wanna make a motion or should I, should we just be done with it? As a whole board is aware that we're gonna, uh, refer to VHB to work? And it, does, do people want a motion or not? And, and I don't really, it doesn't matter to me. I'm gonna go with a no. All right, we'll tell VHB to go. So Patrick, can you, um, I think that one thing with the uh, Dropbox was that it had expired. Can you get the digital drawings to VHB, to Wayne?
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you very much. And I will send an email to him to, uh, to start working, that he's authorized to work and get with, I'm just gonna tell him to talk directly with you with questions. Is that good?
Yes, Wayne's actually on vacation, so I would ask that you, uh, carbon copy Nate, um, who was doing the reviews with him.
Oh, I actually don't know who it will be. I'll, I'll, I'll email and see what his, um, response says, you know, his auto response, and then I'll email those people. Okay.
Thank you, contact.
No problem. Thank you very much for coming. Oh, actually, if you want to stick around for another bit, there's two more items on the same topic, sort of. Uh, there's the round table that we had in town. At that round table, uh, it came up that the exit from the, sort of the backside exit into the, uh, CBS parking lot, you know, kind of over by their drive thru, had a well or something in that spot, and we were wondering if you were aware of that and if you could move you, just so that you wouldn't run over it, I guess was the point.
Yeah, we're looking into that now. We're, we're aware of it, located on the survey, we're trying to address it. I don't have a solution, but hopefully by, you know, the hearing will have, um, method of addressing that.
Okay. Um, I don't think any, uh, the, the other thing was that the fire department was a little concerned about the, um, the illustrated, uh, truck or, or, it might have been all of the truck, e- even delivery trucks. It was a little bit tight for them and they were shown running over some curbs and things like that, and he wasn't particularly concerned about it, except that he didn't wanna get stuck, you know?
Yes, I received the minutes from that meeting, so I'm meeting with the traffic consultant tomorrow so we can address those.
Excellent. So, oh, and the minutes came from Heather or where'd they come from?
Um, they weren't necessarily minutes, they were notes from, uh, Bill Scully, the traffic engineer who was attending that round table.
Excellent. Could you, um, if, if there is such a thing in there, you know, public or some of that uh, use or whatever, can we include them in the hearing when it comes to it? Maybe share them with, uh, Wayne or in the board, if, unless, unless he feels that they're proprietary or private to you?
I'll see what I can do.
Okay, thank you. What else was there on that one? There, there are concerns about the, um, uh, exit onto, um, Woodland and that causing, because it's so close to the stoplight. I don't know if there's anything to do. I think it's better. The police were concerned about it because they, I think they were under the impression that that was the only exit and they didn't want sort of everything going out into Woodland. I told them it's not true. It is the, the the, the exit and entrance that is existing to Dunkin' Donuts is gonna be the same. It's gonna be the same place where you come in and out. It, it just is another option now. I don't know, I just wanted that out there.
Yes, Bill was, Bill was in attendance at that meeting, so he'll be prepared to address those concerns.
Okay. Let's see what else. Jay? I'm, I'm looking for anybody else who has any concerns about that, the round table. Christina, do you have anything that you've heard, even though you weren't in attendance, that came through Heather? About that meeting or anybody came through anything? I'll give you an opportunity to, to come forward as a, um, outside of the board contributor.
Heather hasn't said anything to us formally as a board that I know of.
Okay, do you wanna talk about anything about the project, any questions you have? It can sort of be a preliminary thing, Patrick.
I don't have any.
No.
I didn't attend the round table, so I don't have any.
Do you have any questions about the project in general?
No, I don't know if I can say this differently. No. I do not have questions about the project. Mark have questions for me about the project, because I think you're alluding to something, so just throw it out there. Let's do it. I mean, don't.
I'm illustrating, I can let you talk during the meeting, that's all.
Um, Mark is chair. If you're making that comment, normally you don't do this because it's not the right forum, right, when you're running a meeting, but um, no, I don't have any comment for the fourth time.
Okay, good. Jay, anything from you?
No, I'm just here to listen, Paul. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and then the next thing is for the board, for the planning board, so the, the round table, um, I, I, I'll, I'll consider that finished, the, the review of the round table. Uh, comments to the ZBA for the drive thru hearing that's coming up. They, they put it out there and they asked us for comments. I didn't rewrite or pre-write anything because we sort of decided we weren't gonna do that. Does anybody have any recommendation to them, to the, from the planning board to the ZBA about rules or anything that we should bring to their attention? No, or yes, anybody? No. Okay, uh, what do we want that comment letter to say? Should I just put a comment letter to say that we are in favor of them allowing the, uh, drive thru there because it is an improvement up to the existing drive thru situation and we're about to start the, uh, project that, the side plane review for the whole thing? Sound good? Sound bad? Anybody? I just need, I just need something to, to decide if we're gonna write a letter or not write a letter, if it's gonna be just benign or specific to anything. Look, I know letter.
That's, that's fine.
From me, no comments.
What?
No comments from me.
Okay, Paul, you have anything? Kevin, you have anything?
No, my only concern with anything with Dunkin' Donuts is the fact that, uh, I, I never know if the length of distance from one to the other is enough, so, um, somebody and somebody smarter than me will probably say it's enough and then we'll have traffic out on that street, so.
To distance from, what do you mean, from the, sort of the design of their queuing?
I'm sorry?
You, you said the distance, you don't?
The, the, the amount, the, the, yes, the, the, the length of distance from the drive thru in the car queuing is. I, I, I'm not convinced it is any better than it is now, so.
Okay, but you, I mean, I, I, I don't, I'm not aware of anything that we can tell the ZBA that says that.
Oh, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just personally think that it doesn't, unless I misread the drawings, I, 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 it doesn't appear to me that it's any better than it is now. The distance.
Oh, except, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it's an improvement to what is there just because the traffic doesn't cross each other, that's all.
Maybe.
Like you don't have the people entering the line going across, the people exiting the line.
Hmm, it's not what I saw.
Oh, okay, well, I mean, we'll get into it. Did you, did you get drawings for it?
Well, just the drawings that I, I remember we had at the, at the meeting. It, it's not a topic that we need to go through right now and hammer out, but, you know.
No, but I'm, I'm just gonna.
I think, I think the goal is to be an improvement, so I would expect at some point in time.
Right, uh, so we drive through. I'm gonna write just a, a, a letter or email that says we're not gonna have to comment on it.
Mark. There is one, there is one question in the chat.
What is it?
Oh. Mary No- Noise said, asset traffic study being done for the amount of traffic on Woodland Street.
Mary knows, you can, uh, uh, you, you can talk to us directly. You don't have to go through the chat. I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't have the chat open, so I didn't, uh, I didn't pay attention to that. The traffic study, actually, is Patrick still here? I'm not sure if the traffic study is done, except that, yes, they know exactly what the traffic is. At the round table, it came out and the, the traffic person was aware of how many trips they need because they have a current Dunkin' Donuts there. You know, they, they looked at that, they looked at all the traffic because they're doing another project across the street. Um, so yes, there is a traffic study, um, done. I don't know. I don't have the conclusion to the traffic study. Patrick, do you have a, do you have a specific question, Mary, or do you, you're just wondering if they're doing any analysis? Yeah.
Um, from the things that I've seen at the other meetings, they're, they did the traffic study on West Boylston Street. Nothing was said about Woodland Street. We can barely get out of our driveway as it is, and especially on the weekends when the park is busy. Um, the traffic backed up to the park is unbelievable, so you think that if they're using the CVS driveway for exit and entering, it's gonna impact the, um, traffic on Woodland. That's why I was wondering if anybody has addressed that.
I'm just gonna take it fully advantage here of Patrick being here. Patrick, do you know if that is in the the, the Woodland traffic coming out of CVS?
If I could say, Mr. Chair, there is a thorough traffic study that's been submitted and we'll be prepared to answer those questions at the public hearing.
Okay, excellent. So Mary, do you wanna come back at the, I think it's gonna be our next meeting?
On the seventeenth, unfortunately, a close family member is having major surgery that day. So I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get onto the meeting. I'm gonna try very hard.
Okay, and I'll note the question and I'll, and hopefully I'll remember to ask the question myself and.
Can, can I email you guys some questions?
Yeah, send them to the planning board.
Okay, that would be great because I have a whole bunch.
Oh, bring it on and we'll.
Bring it on. Well, you know, we, we've lived with CVS for 20 years. Okay, and there, we've had a very good relationship with CVS, not so much with the landowner. So, um, I think we can come to some agreements, but is definitely gonna impact our property.
Are you the next one, just right next to them?
Oh, yeah.
All right, yes, send the questions.
With all the Plows, the Sanders, the landscapers, the, the traffic, and now with Dunkin' Donuts open that much earlier than CVS, this is definitely gonna impact us.
The, well, all right, my, my comment was gonna be, I don't know if it, if the traffic is gonna be at the same time as when the um, park is open, because I think that during the round table.
Oh, yes, it is.
The Dunkin', the Dunkin' Donut traffic?
Saturday morning Dunkin' Donuts traffic is crazy. And the people who walk from the park down to Dunkin' Donuts and walk back with their bags is quite evident. So now, if it's right here, are they gonna drive or do we get a crosswalk? We have no sidewalks. There, there's a lot of questions. This is.
Send the questions and then, um, we'll, we'll bring them, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And from what I understand too, on an average Saturday, there's a thousand cars that go through Dunkin' Donuts. So how many, I wanna, I'm just curious, will they have a number? How many are gonna use Woodland Street rather than West Boylston Street? You know, because right now you have to go all the way around onto West Boylston Street, but if there's a cut through and then are, are they gonna be taking, um, what do you call it, parking spaces? Parking spaces out of Dunk, out of CVS's parking lot to accommodate all of this? You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of impact here.
No, there absolutely is. I mean, that's what the hearing is for, you know, that's all. Come out.
Right, right. Yeah. So I, I, I appreciate you guys.
Well, thank you. Let's see, what's the next thing? Any more comments or should we move on to the next thing?
Good, Mark, um, I know you're going down the agenda items. I'm sorry I was a few minutes late. Did we already reorganize the board?
Oh, we did the, um, the officers, but you came in for the next one.
Yeah, so, so what happened? Can, can you just kind of film real quick?
Chair was Mark, vice chair is Frank, clerk is Paul and treasurer is Raj.
Oh, good, I didn't get nominated because I was gone, perfect. That was the risk you take.
Okay, thank you.
Who was clerk, I'm sorry?
Paul.
Paul. Raj was treasurer? Thank you.
Frank is vice chair. Did you want to be chair? Because I'll, we can do.
No, I was going to nominate you.
Damn it, all right, good. All right, um, we'll go on to this, uh, uh, any more discussion of, um, which we have? Dunkin Donuts?
No, I think the public hearing will, will have more.
Excellent, good. Those hearing date, all right, so we're setting the hearing day, brand table, comments to ZBA. All right, number eight is the A and R endorsement for two ninety-one Laurel Street. So I looked at the thing, the, the drawing, I think the drawing is no problem. Um, the problem that I'm seeing is with the, uh, signatures on the Form A. I don't know who the owner is, it's an LLC and I'm not sure how to handle signatures of the owners from an LLC, so, um, I, let's see, in order to move this along, I'd like to, did anybody, did, did people see the drawing? That, that I, that I sent out?
Briefly looked at, didn't study it.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's not much to it, this is, um, Laurel Street past the brush dump on the other side of the expressway. I think that's where it is. Um, it's a great big piece of property they're cutting in half, there's plenty of frontage. We don't actually have the drawing yet, but I was going to table it until I, I put an email to him asking him if he's in a hurry for it. Because I don't know exactly what to do with the, uh, LLC. I was going to ask, I, I was going to research a little bit more and see what we need to do to do our due diligence on that to, to have, how to get a signature of owner with an LLC. So, man, we can take, unless you want to talk about the drawing itself. The, the drawing itself, I think, isn't too bad. You know, there's plenty of frontage and plenty of, um, access. And it's, you know, the fee would be, I, I think, from memory, we're a hundred dollar fee to do it and then a hundred per lot. So it would be a three hundred dollar fee. That's from memory, but, um, and we don't have that check or the signed application. So I've asked him if we could put it off until next meeting, just so that we can get the, how to do the signatures ironed out. Anybody have any objection to doing that? Or, uh, if the, the only, if, if he's in, I, I also asked him, but I didn't hear back yet, if he's in a hurry to start a project. Um, and he needs it done. If he does and it's urgent and there's something horrible, maybe I'll, I'll ask for a, uh, a quick Zoom meeting to, to get everybody together on it. Um, but other than that, I would like to just put it off till next meeting. Any, any more discussion?
Nope.
Okay, next one. Uh, comments for ZBA to seventy-two Malden Street oversized accessory apartment. Um, I sent the email that I have and that's all the information I have from the ZBA. Then, does any, does anybody have any more information or read through it and have an opinion that we should offer to the ZBA? I mean.
I didn't get a chance to read through it. Can you give me the Cliff Notes?
Um, the, 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 I, I'm not exactly sure what's going on with it. Raj, are you, do you have a, a summary from ZBA or something like that that you can offer?
Yeah, I do know the project, uh, or I do know the petition on that. So this is an accessory apartment. Oh. One, it is existing, I guess. They wanted to make it official. So for that reason, you know, they are coming to the, they did go to the building inspector. So the size of the unit is more than either the town by law allows. Or by right enough, they can have an accessory apartment if there is the dimension meets, nets. Whereas the size is more than state, state law. And all, yeah, more than state, uh, state law allows. So that's why, you know, they are coming to the, uh, ZBA. The total size in a lower size accessory apartment.
Yeah, and, I mean, I, I don't, as, as a planning board, I don't know if we have anything even to say about it. Um, as far as the rules go, except that it's in, you know, it's in excess of the rules. I, I mean, I, I, I don't have any advice for them or an opinion. It's not really a planning board kind of thing because it's an accessory apartment, which has never been a planning board thing. You know?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we can, I think the only thing that the planning board could offer is that it's in a, uh, I think it's a single residence zone and it's just gonna, I think it's, I, I guess it's, I guess it's general residence because he said it's already a two-family house that they're adding an accessory apartment to or something like that. I think that's part of the story, so it's going to be a potential for three units on the property. Um, I don't know, we, we could just say that we're planning board would like to stick to zoning or something like that. But it's not really a constructive thing to do, they know all the rules, ZBA.
Or think we'd have no comment on that?
I, I, I mean, I'm on a, I don't think that.
Yeah, I mean, we can say something to the effect of it, it's not really on a planning board opinion oriented type of question and then just leave it at that.
Yeah. I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll have no comment because it's not really a planning board.
No comment or no opinion?
Yeah. Issue. No comment. Or. Okay, I'll send that message to Toby or to Chris. All right, this is an unfortunate one. The TA, uh, sent me the planner job descriptions. I didn't even read them, so did anybody read the, the, the job descriptions? Um, I think they're gonna, I, I'm not sure what they're going to do, I don't think there's funding for the physician, but they wanted to finalize them with the personnel board. So I'm not sure if there's urgency, but we should get back to her. Um, do, does somebody, do people want more time? And I'll just tell her that we'll get back to her individually or, or through me, you, you want to do that? So if you, you can read them in your leisure, get back to me and maybe I'll give you a, it, it might take a week, get back to me, I'll summarize comments and give them back to her. Or, or we can put it off till the next meeting, either.
Well, I don't think there's any, like you just said, urgency, so e- either one is fine with me, either the next meeting or individually.
Anybody else? I mean, uh, I, I don't know what her urgency is, so I was gonna offer to be faster than slower, but we can be slower and just do it next week, next meeting. I'm in favor of it.
Next meeting is fine, Mark.
All right, number twenty. It's twenty because it was an edit late, but I still stuck it in after number ten. This is a bylaw that is, uh, proposed by the, uh, select board to solve the, um, I forget, I don't have all the language written for me, I don't have my agenda. Um, to solve the problem of all the drive-throughs on, um, Route twelve or West Boston Street, they want to prohibit them in, for going forward and make a bylaw that does so. The bylaw that was written is pretty, you know, pretty good, it, it, uh, talks about, um, what type of drive-throughs, it talks about, uh, that there's a prohibition, it talks about grandfathering, it talks about how to get them in the future, I think it talks about that it would have to be a, um, a variance. You know, I mean, it's a pretty extensive, um, bylaw. Um, ZBA's comments were that they didn't really, ZBA is really the one that, um, uh, wo- works on the law afterwards, like legis, doesn't legislate but actually makes the law work. So they didn't want to write the law also, but they did have a comment that the, um, right now the table of use allows, uh, drive-throughs and ATMs, uh, with a special permit, you know, in, in certain zones. And this bylaw prohibits them in Route twelve only. So he suggested or requested something to avoid confusion in that table that says something to the effect of, may, may, I was thinking that he wants something to clarify that they are allowed with a special permit in other places than what. And I was thinking that we would put two tables, an extra line in the table of use. It would be whatever the description is, drive-in, uh, restaurants on West Boylston Street or drive-in restaurants elsewhere. And, and so, so then you could say, no, 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 across the board on Route twelve and no, yes, or site plant, a special permit, whatever the current situation is elsewhere. Um, that would be my suggestion to clear up the ZBA's request. Um, anybody else who get a chance to take a look at the bylaw? The text?
So the, the only thing, you know, for a procedural thing. Uh, I, I'm not sure enough many are going to take this. I, you know, we can always put it for a public hearing. Okay, but before then.
Well, we have to do a public hearing because it's a bylaw and it's a zoning bylaw, it's our responsibility.
This, if this was referred by the select board, the planning board has the obligation to make a public hearing, right? So my feelings, you know, I did not see this bylaw on the select board agenda. So maybe, you know, we should request them, the, send it back to the select board, ask them to put it on the, are they going to put it on the, uh, select board, do you know?
Um, there was a little bit going back with an email about that schedule. Um, and it was going to be put on their agenda. I requested that they let me know if they're going to go forward with it or not, so that I do or don't have a hearing, you know, so I can proceed.
By procedurally, now, maybe we should, uh, uh, ask them to put it on the select board agenda. And then, you know, when the select board takes the vote.
Christina, can you? Christina, can you, are, are you planning on putting it on, uh, an agenda? So the, the whole board can vote on it, whether they want it or not, so that I can have a hearing or not? Well, maybe she's not listening. Oh, maybe she doesn't want to listen.
If it's, if it's, um, if, if I can pop in here.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I'm just a member, not an officer, so I can't really speak for it. But I do believe that the intention is to have a conversation about it on the sixteenth. Um, but, but again, it's, it's, it's a conversation about referring the idea to the, um, to the planning board, um.
Okay, I mean, there's, there's sort of a, a formality because I, the, there's a sixty-day, whatever, in my head, it's a rule, there's a sixty-day limit from when you refer to us to having a hearing. And I just want to make sure that I, I, I can do that with my, you know, I have a, a two-week notice and all this kind of stuff. So if you, if you don't want to go forward with it, just let me know and I will not do any hearings. But if you do have it on your agenda and you decide to go forward with it, let me know that too. And I'll start with my posting for a hearing and all that, you know?
Yeah, I.
So I, I just would request that.
I, I did, I did request it is, uh, to be put on the, the agenda for this with the sixteenth, I guess the next meeting, so. Um, I think the sixteenth is the next meeting, so that's, it, it was my request to, to have a conversation about that. So.
Where did this proposal come from?
Um, for years of my own irritation with Dairy Queen.
Well, yeah.
Years of my irritation with Dunkin Donuts. Um, and, you know, I, I've thought for years that there's been a safety issue. Um, never once did I think there was a safety issue about people being pulled out of cars while waiting in line. Um, but that is a safety issue for sure. Um, you know, just from my own perspective, I don't see any need or desire or demand for drive-throughs anywhere else in town but on West Boston's. But, you know, I guess that's part of the conversation. But it, it, it becomes apparent to me that there is a need to have a conversation around what our traffic looks like, what our business looks like, what our community looks like. This is an important thoroughfare through the center of town. Um, do we want our, do we want our community to be more walkable, more livable? Um, how do these things affect, um, traffic flow? Uh, how do these things affect our, uh, livability? You know, I, I worked for years in Watertown, uh, which is an unmitigated disaster, uh, regardless of whether or not there's drive-throughs or not. Um, and, you know, they, they outright ban drive-throughs um, for good reason, because it just stops traffic, you know, creates back, backlogs. Uh, to Mary's point, the, the intersection there, um, isn't controlled by West Boston, so we don't even have control over, uh, changing the, the traffic lights. Instead of be able to, you know, deal with traffic flow coming out of that drive-through. Um, so as it happens, um, the Dunkin Donuts just happen to be concurrent with my own sort of um, concerns and, you know, certainly in light of the issue at Dairy Queen, um, certainly deserve some conversation.
I agree, um, and, but I don't, I don't think anything's going to happen fast enough to change the Dunkin Donuts project. Just because, you know, it has to go through a bunch of, of a process and get to town meeting and things. We can talk about, you know, that, the, the.
For sure, um, a- as I said, the, the Dunkin Donuts, uh, change wasn't really on my radar at the time, it's just a, a happy coincidence. Um, but I do think it's, you know, um, you know, where this bylaw would not affect. Um, I think it's worth having a conversation around it because that conversation could influence the, um, decision-making around that drive-through.
Yeah, I, 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 the conversation would be, um, the, the bylaw right now is written, the proposed bylaw um, is very, um, it, it's, it's a prohibition. Um, the only thing I fear about a prohibition is you sort of lose any say because you just say it's banned or prohibited or, or, you know, it's just not allowed. Um, I was thinking that it would should be changed to being a high standard. You know, like if somebody wants, say, change it to requiring that they have, you know, uh, whatever, no, uh, no traffic, uh, queuing on the, in the bright of way. And if such a thing happens, you know, you have a, the, the standard procedure becomes that they have a police um, or something, you know, they have another consequence to when that happens. So they have to design something, you know, like, like I'm, I'm beside myself about Dairy Queen. I mean, why Dairy Queen for so many years has operated like this? Why don't they speed up their process so that they can get through cars faster? You know, I just, I just don't understand what's going on at that, in that situation. I mean, that's just crazy that you can have cars waiting for a half an hour to get to the, to the window. You know?
They, they don't have the infrastructure to handle their throughput rate and that's just what it comes down to. So, I mean, but the, the problem is.
It surprises me that they don't get a second machine or something, you know, more staff.
The, the, the problem is though, that that liability now gets pushed out to the community. And we've got people trying to crisscross the traffic, we've got people on the street. We have people trying to make this ridiculous left-hand turn from, from Worcester, trying to cut across into traffic in that queue. Now, if I'm waiting in that queue, I'm not going to let that guy in. So now I'm, I'm having, you know, hand-to-hand combat. And now, you know, the, the traffic is all backed up. So, I mean, I, I don't know how that got approved in the first place. I'm not, I'm not planning to, to go research that out, but it just seems to me that the idea, um, I think we should start a prohibition and if there is going to be any exceptions to it, um, you know, what is that high standard? But to your point, um, this is, this is starting a conversation. We've got a draft of a bylaw that, um, starts off with a strict prohibition, so the, the community has. Um, starts off with a strict prohibition. See what the, the community has to say about it, and where do we come from there?
Um, no, no, I, I, I agree. It's, it's, it certainly is the start of the conversation, but my, my. Fear or concern is that it's a only moving forward prohibition. It doesn't solve the problems that are there. So I, I was wondering if we made a, somehow made the bylaw so that if they ever want to improve their property, it applies. If they don't, you know, we address grandfathering, we address the fact that it's, uh, you know, if there's an issue. Maybe we give them three years to fix the problem and then, then the, whatever the enforcement technique. Comes into play again. They have to have a detail or something, you know?
I don't know. I, I do know that, you know, there, there's the bank there in Holden. That requires, has a detail on weekends because that traffic is, is a disaster. Gerardo seems to, to have that stuff figured out at Easter. Um, you know, if you, if you don't have the infrastructure to handle your throughput, then you need to have a plan. And Dairy Queen has never stepped up to create a plan, never hired a detail. Um, you know. That's, that's.
Right.
You know, this is.
But the, the prohibition doesn't solve the problem that way. You. Them to have a plan to solve their problem and somehow manage to make a bylaw that does that rather than. With their problem and we just solve it for future.
I, I, I would be really happy to, you know, create the prohibition and force current drive-throughs to solve their problem.
Right. Oh, then, yes. No, okay, that adds to the law to solve the current problem too. I think that is a, a critical addition that needs to be made. I agree.
So, you know, that, that's, that's on my mind there. I mean, like, I don't. I understand um the, the issue at hand here at Dunkin' Donuts and that, and that proposed change. I don't know that that handles throughput. Um, it certainly creates traffic problems elsewhere, certainly creates traffic problems at that stop intersection. Um. You know, I, I, I don't know. Uh, I don't know what to do on that one. Um, but this isn't a public hearing and. Um, you, you've granted me the, the, the grace to, to have this conversation, so I don't want to go too far afield, but.
Well, I, I, I want you to bring good topics to the select board's discussion. How's that?
Sounds good to me.
So, and then let me know what you want to do as far as me making a hearing.
So, Mark, the only question I have is, you know. So officially, when it's the sixty-day clock starts, are you considering this as an uh. Uh bylaw referral to the planning board, or you will wait until the select board? Uh, uh.
At this point, at this point, I've heard about it, and if I don't get a turn off.
So this meeting is just, this ma- this meeting is just an opinion meeting.
It is an opinion meeting, but if I don't hear that it's gonna happen, I don't, and I don't get an official. Here, we're sending this to you to do it with a date. I'm gonna use, I got the first email. You know, because I, I don't, I, I, I don't want, I, I don't know what else to do. If, if it's. If the, the select board has a bylaw to change and they've told me about it and. I mean, what else should I do? Should I ignore it completely until? They select, I don't know, until they come back at me?
No, I'm just asking, what is the procedural wise, you know? So do we consider this as a?
Well, I sent a, I sent a.
Day class starts today?
I, yeah, it, it starts the, whenever I got that bylaw, the email um from Christina and, and Jay. Um, as far as I'm concerned, unless Jay, you make a motion to not go forward or to. Formally send it to the select board, that'll be the new date. Sorry, to the planning board. That'll be the new date that I start my sixty-day clock, but. Unless I get a, don't do anything, I'm gonna, or, or a new date, I'm gonna consider the other day that the data start.
I, it is, it is my intention that this moves forward to the planning board for sure. Now, subject to, subject to a vote, I don't know what the select board's gonna do, but that's my intention for sure.
But if you go to the select, just get a, get a, a formal, we want to send this to them on this date. You know, and then that way that I have a good date to start my clocking. That's all.
I think, you know, we have to follow the, uh, my, my only concern is, you know. So what is the legal, legal procedure wise, procedural wise? What is the appropriate? I know that, you know, we need to, we need the by, there is a bylaw, send it to us. But this bylaw, is it one member of the select board is okay, or we need to get? There are one thing I need to make sure this, you know, referred by the select board. So when the select board refers from that time onwards, it's sixty-day clock. So, but if it is, you know, if one select board member sent the bylaw, is it starts the clock on the day? That's the only one clarification. I, I'm, I'm fine, whatever the chair wants to do. But what is the legal thing? I don't know. I'm not an attorney. But in the past, it should be referred by the select board.
It should be, and it should be in the minutes of the select board meeting that it says. You know, we're gonna send this over there. Maybe I get a letter, maybe I don't. But if it's in the meeting minutes, that'll be the day that I. You know, if there's a motion in the minutes, that'll be the date that I start if I hear, you know, the official day. But if I don't hear anything else, then I, I mean, I'm gonna.
For, again, you know, we do have enough time to make this.
Yeah, I know, sixty days covers the meeting.
No, even uh after the select board meeting also, we have enough time, or we can hold another. Quick meeting also, public, oh, public hearing, you do need times, right?
We need the fourteen days and the seventeen days.
It's up to you, Mark. Whatever you do.
No, I mean, I hope that the, the, if, if it gets on an agenda and then, and you make a, actually, then I'll ask you or Jay. To make a motion on it, just so that we get a definitive answer going to the planning board, whether we should hold the hearing or not. Um, and just, and what the referral date is, I would prefer it be in the minutes, just so that I can point to the minutes as the day. But if not, I mean, if nothing comes to me and I still know about it, I mean, and I can still make it work with the date. The other, yesterday or the day before, when I got the email. I mean, I'll leave it at that date if I don't hear anything else, unless I get, unless I hear a date that says, don't do anything else. You know, but if you make, if you were Jay, make a motion and it's in the minutes, that'll be the official date. But if none of that happens, and I've heard about it already, I'm gonna consider the date I heard about it from Christine and Jay.
Still.
All right, so I have, the sixty-day clock has got plenty of time left to it, so. Um, I'll, I'll wait for the seventeenth, which is in what, eight days? And see what the minutes say. Or, or I'm lettered from you guys, either way.
Okay.
Um, anything else on? Do, do you wanna put that, should that be a future agenda item also? Um, to talk about in general, or should we wait for the select board stuff?
Wait.
Wait, okay. Okay, I'm gonna keep an eye on it and. We get referred, I'll start making hearing dates. Um, anything else on that one, or should we move on to number twenty-one?
Please move on.
Number twenty-one is select board, uh, oh, I don't, okay. I don't know, I say select board referred, Westland Circle wrote acceptance to us. I think it was a complaint. Or a request from Ali to the select board to get their road, that road accepted. Um. There's some issues with it. Um, we've tried it a number of times. Um. I was gonna make a suggestion that we get uh Patrick McCarty. From McCarty Engineering and, and Construction to quote doing, finishing up the project for Ali and then give him that quote. You know, and, and say, here you go, see, see what you can do. I mean, there, there might be some construction to do, uh, and then we're gonna need an attorney to do the uh. Homeowners Association work. I mean, he, he's been working on it. I don't know what he's done yet so far. Um, if that, if he's completed it, he's completed it. If he hasn't, I don't know, get another attorney to quote it to him. You know, it just, like, I, I don't want, I don't know how to proceed with it, with it incomplete, with the project incomplete.
Has he paid his bill?
And we have to get him to pay his bill.
Well, if he hasn't paid his bill, we don't do anything. Done.
Okay, I agree.
And we don't do anything, anything new until he puts enough money into the coffers to pay the bills. I'm, I'm done with this. I, I can't believe that we are still having this discussion. Three years later, it was dragging on when I was on the board, and that was three years ago.
Yeah. It's still dragging.
Pay up or don't even bother coming to us.
And then, but if we can get him to pay up, um, what, what do you think about moving on? Can I get McCarty to quote finishing the, the job?
Mark, it's a moot point until he pays. He's, he's gonna pay his old bill and he's gonna put enough money in the system to get McCarty to, to his payment to be covered and some extra. For the next time.
We're not gonna pay McCarty directly. It's gonna be him.
I understand that, but, well, whoever, but. This, it's, it's, I'm sick of having these discussions. He has over, he's probably had a year. That he knew he had to pay his bill and he hasn't done anything. I'm done talking about it.
Okay, I, I agree with Kevin. Also, you know, so let's uh, for the next meeting, put it on the agenda and also ask him to show up to the meeting. So if he is not there, we have no intention of doing anything at all, you know? So he has to be here.
Okay, invite to next meeting too. Okay. All right, that's a good one. Anything else on that one? Oh, do we want to write a letter back to the select board saying what we're gonna do? I mean, I'll just send them an email.
Well, you guys remember they're already here. I think they figured it out.
Okay. Something. Uh, the construction, okay, next item, unless you want to do some more, no? Next item is VHB's construction reports um about. Oh, Century Drive and. I don't have the agenda in front of me. What's the next thing? Century Drive and?
Fuller Project.
And Fuller, okay. To be honest, I haven't read them yet. I know about the Century Drive one, but I don't, I haven't looked at the Fuller report yet. Anybody? Okay, well, everybody has homework. Read those construction reports and we'll, we'll put it on the agenda again. Jump back in. Um, for BHB updates, I don't really have anything except for, to authorize them to keep going with, um, or to start working on the Duncan project. Anything else we want BHB to do? Well, okay, good. Okay, so now we're at the old business ADU discussion. Um, the only thing I want to announce on that is I went to a, I think they called it a workshop. From the, whatever their alliterate, their, their name is, uh. The Executive Office of Housing and Community Development or something like that. Um. I was one of three people there. I asked the, 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 the only thing that came out, I think that was the most interesting was. Nah, two things, and this is from memory, the um. In the, as of right, ADU bylaw, it says that it's only in single residence zones. And I asked that, I said, so if it's only in single residence zones, what about in other places? And they said. Well, actually, that's, it's in any place, any zone that allows single residences. So. That sort of changes our thing a little bit because it's not just single residents. We're allowed, we're allowed. Single residents in any zone here. You can do it in general residence, you can do it in, I, I think business, you can do it in lots of places. It, it's basically everywhere in town. Now, anybody can have an ADU. They don't have to worry because, because single residence is allowed in other zones. So that was interesting to hear, to hear. Um. Uh, the current, we, we should update our current bylaw. Um, Dave Femu would like us to. Always, um, because it's, because right now it's, it, it, it's in conflict with the, um, the state one. Um, we have to sort of discuss, actually, all we have to do is look at other towns and see what they're up to. Oh, to change. Any other comments about what to do with our ADU bylaw?
So with the, the ADU. If the dimensions or the size of the. accessory apartment, they can have it by right, so they don't have to go to the ZB A. Is that the one?
Yeah, well, no, well, yeah, our, our current bylaw was written before that, so it says everybody. But right, they don't have to do anything if they comply to the Mass General Law Law, you know?
So the only problem is, is, you know, as you said. Our uh bylaw on the accessory apartment, it's uh, the, the, the size is less compared to the. State allowed size of the units, so that's.
Hundred feet and the state allows nine hundred or half of the.
Seven hundred. Hundred. So if I have to say, so we do need to, you know, make that change. That's all I, I have.
Oh, I mean, there's, there's a few things. There's that, we say that one of the units has to be lived in by the owner. And the state law one says nothing about, says you can't even have that requirement. I mean, there's, there's a few things we would have to change. Or, you know, that we can, this, this is sort of a strategy idea. Um, uh. Whether we want to re- remain, do, do we want to delete it completely? Do we want to duplicate the state law, or do we want to give the ZB A? Um, some guidance as to what to do when people want to work outside of the state law one, like if they wanted it to be. Oversized or something.
For me, I think, you know, we should, uh, we should keep the bylaw, but we should align with the state, state law.
And then the, the, yeah, we, we have to align with the state law or else, I mean, the state law. It governs anyways, but what do we want to do when people want to do something in, outside of this? The, that rule, like if they want to go, like for this one that just came up, do they want to, they want to make it bigger?
That goes to the ZB A. By special permit.
Well, but the special permit only allows the seven hundred right now. Should we bring it up to nine hundred, or should we make it so that they have?
Exactly, ZB A will make the decision.
Should we not put a square footage in?
No, we should put the square footage, but by the state law. How much is the state law? Say, suppose, you know, I'm not, I'm just giving an example. Our bylaw says seven hundred square feet, state nine hundred square feet, just put the nine hundred square feet, you know? Anything beyond that, so it's not, if, with the nine hundred square feet, they are allowed by right. They just have to go to the building inspector, get the building permit done. Whereas if it is more than a nine hundred, if you go to the building inspector, the building inspector will deny. As soon as he denied, they will go to the uh ZB A for a special permit. That's about it. Right?
So should we, should we just say that the, the bylaw says that the, just simplify it incredibly? And just say that the state law governs anything outside of the state law that is. The, the only thing I don't want to do is not talk about it, just so that it's, so that you can ask for a special permit, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll just say that any outside of the state law, you go to the.
Yeah.
ZB A. That's the law. Otherwise. ZB A for special. And in, okay, and in general, do we want them to be easy to get?
If it is allowed by the, by, by the, if it is allowed by right, I have no issue. If it is not allowed by right. Then the, you know. It, it will be the ZB A, so let them make the decision.
Right, I, 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 this was another one of those things, like, do we want to put guidance in or not? That's all. Okay, so, I ran out of notes. Okay, discussion of page Fuller Properties as built drawings. Um, I don't have any discussion. I'll, I'll roll that one to the next. Um, meeting again. Fourteen, roll two, unless anybody has a discussion on it.
Nope.
May review and approve invoices, payments, or other outstanding bills? Nicole, do we have a whole pile? Okay, so we made our thing where we have one signature, so if you want to leave those in the mailbox, um.
Well, did.
Sorry, my husband's talking in the background.
Okay.
We, we have, um, yeah, we have two VHBs that need to be signed, um, but that's about it, so I can put those in the mailbox.
Okay, cool. I'll be back on Friday. I'll do it unless someone. Okay, cool. I'll be back on Friday. I'll do it unless somebody else wants to do it. Any one person can. Everybody has to stop in though and sign that signature form.
Will sign it, Mark.
Yeah, what is that gonna be in the box?
In the mailbox, yeah.
Um, yeah, I'll try to get there tomorrow. I think I can do that tomorrow.
Okay.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
Well, I will be there. I will sign it. I can save some, unless, you know, some, someone else want to go there, that's fine. I'll be there.
Okay, um, uh, approved minutes, June eleventh?
Motion to approve, June eleventh, twenty twenty-five minutes.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? You know, all in favor, roll call, Raj?
Yes.
Mark is a yes, Paul?
I can't vote on that. I was not present.
Right, present, oh, and Kevin?
Yes.
All right, good, oof, we got three, excellent, good, so those are passed. It's funny though, because Paul, you have to sign them.
Yeah, okay.
So next thing, it's a review minutes, uh, some are noticing other towns. And then, Nicole put one in there, I don't know.
A lot of them in there.
Oh, yeah, there were a bunch.
I don't remember, yeah.
Okay, did everybody read them and pull out all the pertinent information that they wanted? Well, I'm assuming they did, perfect. Uh, any other notices or announcements? Anybody having a party, inviting us to their barbecue, something like that? Hearing a big fat no.
Next meeting.
Most entire jam.
Hold on, what's the next meeting? Nineteenth?
Yes, I think it's the fifteenth.
For sure.
Is that what we said, yeah, August thirteenth, which is the second Wednesday. Okay.
I have a question. Has my, has my name been added to the planning board distribution list?
Oh. Um. Uh, I've been sending, my emails have been going out as just to the, your, you individually people. I will ask, um, I think it's Travis to add you there. Okay, I will do that. And we'll have to take Vinnie off so he's gonna find out about our secrets.
That's right.
And.
He's been on so long, he's the one that has the secrets.
Yeah, probably true.
That's true.
Email list, email list and leave Vinnie. I'm just kidding. Um, okay, so that was, anything else? Anybody have any reports, anything else you did that was fun? Okay, now we'll take them.
Second.
I didn't make, I can't make, well, okay, I made the motion.
Raj already made it.
Already made.
Right, it is not debatable. Raj?
Yes.
Mark, yes, Paul? Yes.
Kevin, yes, that's good enough.
All right, Kevin? Excellent. Everybody have a great night. Eight fourteen, not too bad, hour fifteen minutes. All right, have a good night, everybody.